Called the meeting to order. This is the Village of Riverside's Board of Trustees regular meeting for Thursday, September 19th. The time is 7:05. Everyone in attendance, you're welcome to speak at any time during the meeting. You can either speak during public comment at the start of the meeting, or if you would prefer to wait till a particular agenda item comes up, you're welcome to speak at that time. I just ask that you be recognized by me and that you make your comments from the podium so that the folks at home can hear and see what you have to say. So with that, I'd ask you to please call the roll.
President Sells.
Here.
Trustee Pollak.
Here.
Trustee Hamilton.
Here.
Trustee Valerie.
Here.
Trustee Collins.
Here.
Trustee Foley.
Here.
Village manager, Scolera.
Here.
Village attorney, Melina.
Here.
Village attorney, Mars.
Here.
Also present, village clerk, Kathy Haley. Not present this evening, trustee Sussman.
Thank you very much. We have a quorum. Would you please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
Thank you. And first up this evening are presentations and public comment. Would anyone like to address the board?
Trustee Sells, trustees.
Village manager, Scolera. Legal consuls. And of course, our clerk, Kathy Haley. I would like to address all of you on several issues. Parking lot cost 6163 East Burlington. Bed and breakfast. Overlay zoning along the B-1 district on Harlem Avenue and the B-1 traditional district between, on East Burlington, between Dillaplane and Harlem Avenue. Tonight I submitted to the village clerk, Mrs. Haley, documentation as of December 2012 showing the cost of the 6163 Burlington parking lot. Verified by information obtained from the village finance director. At a cost of $967,525. The village obtained a grant of $198,595 and a donation of $10,000 from the Chamber of Commerce. Reducing the cost to $758,930. For 27 spaces. At a cost of $28,108 per space. This park was, this lot, parking lot, was initiated by the White Oak Rush administration. It seems that it's empty quite often. The village agreed by ordinance for the amount of $85,000, $5,000 per space to supply to the village center building 17 off-site parking spaces. They required by zoning for commercial uses. The question to this board, will this board grant the village center 17 spaces from the green parking lot as required by ordinance? Does anybody want to answer that? I didn't think so. Allowing bed and breakfast facilities in residential districts. The village has no department policy or licensed health inspector to oversee facilities that allow carryout food or serve food as a bed and breakfast facility would. We are under the jurisdiction of Cook County Health Department, which in the past has no village inspection agendas. I see it's on your agenda tonight. Many years back, the village chose not to allow rooming houses or overnight facilities. We had a large one at Harlem and Black Hawk where the townhouses are now located. And rooms were rented at homes near the Dam Bridge area 60 years back. With all due respect, it seems that this board's mindset is leaning left. So residents should be aware that a bed and breakfast facility, or what have you, most likely will be located in a residential and/or historical areas near historic buildings without warning or public hearing. Finally, the overlay zoning in the B-1 district targeted at Long Common and Harlem Avenue, allowing only business to create sales tax revenue. Several years back, the plant commission rezoned the B-1 district and the transitional B-1 area on Burlington. In their rezoning, they created out of 41 properties, 36 non-conformities. 36 non-conformity properties. The 7-Eleven is non-conforming. Sarah Lee is non-conforming. The Cleaners is non-conforming. The Strip Mail, where the wine, used to be the wine and the Chinese restaurant, is non-conforming. The Marathon is non-conforming. The Bank of America is non-conforming. And everything north, on the north side of Burlington in the transitional zone, is non-conforming, including Dr. Orlando's dentistry, which he spent almost a million dollars, got a variation for a 10-foot setback, and 60 days later, the plant commission reduced the setback to five feet. The south part of, south of the Burlington, the 315 condos are conforming, and the Gorman Building is conforming. The other two buildings are non-conforming. The Texor Building is non-conforming. The gas station there is non-conforming. I'll bypass the apartment building, but they're non-conforming because of their rear lot and parking. The strip mall there, where Riverside Foods, Riverside Restaurant and the Doctors, that's non-conforming. The White Fence Farm is non-conforming. The McNeil Building is non-conforming. And the Ogden Medical Center, just west, on Ogden, just west of the McNeil Building, is non-conforming. So I would suggest to this board that maybe the B-1 rezoning from, I would suggest that the board go back to the plant commission and get someone up there that knows what they're doing and get these properties in conforming status. It's irresponsible that a plant commission would rezone almost a whole district and make them non-conforming when previously they were all conforming. Conforming to the zoning, the original zoning code of maybe 20 years ago, which wasn't very good either. Is there any questions, rebuttals, comments? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carriello. Anyone else? Mr. Gallegos?
Alex Gallegos, 3234, South Harlem. Good evening, Mr. President, trustees, those in attendance, and to those watching at home. Sir, I come before you and the village board on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. It is my pleasure to inform the public of the upcoming chamber events. I only have but one item tonight, and that is a reminder of our annual car show, which will be held around the Water Tower campus, as well as the train station on Sunday, September 29th, from 9:00 to 5:00 p.m. We expect about 250 to 300 cars to show up that day. We'll have classic beauties, convertibles, roadsters, you name it, we'll probably have it. I would encourage all residents to attend, bring their families, come out and enjoy the day. Our restaurants will be open that day for refreshments, along with some vendors that will be out on the street as well. And that's all I have for today, sir.
Great. Thank you very much.
Alex, can you give me the time one more time? I'm sorry.
9:00 to 5:00.
Thank you.
Sunday.
I'm Jerry Buttermer. I live at 270 Scottswood, and I'm here with a brief report on the Riverfront Connection area behind these buildings. When I last met with you on September 5th, it was suggested that I meet with the staff and the engineer to discuss that project, possible grading, safety issues, and so on. We met the next morning on the 6th, and Peter, please jump in, or if I say anything that's not accurate. I think we had a very positive meeting. We examined a lot of the issues, and at one point I said, gosh, maybe I'm calling this a path that I shouldn't be. This isn't anything that we intend to build. This is a way to get from point A to point B. And we concluded that we're really talking probably about three landscaped areas, and that that puts it in a different category than a public trail or a public municipality sidewalk. So the tentative conclusion or discussion at that point was, these could be areas that are just turf. If someone chooses to walk across them, they can do that, but it would achieve the objective of getting a connection to the river and opening up the views. It was also suggested that I talk to the Landscape Advisory Commission. I met with them on the 10th. I also met with the Library Board on the 10th. Followed up with the Preservation Commission on the 12th, along with the, attended the Economic Development Commission also on the 12th. And there I received a copy of the CMAP, which I apologize, I didn't do my homework, and I had not read the CMAP study. So a lot of things came into focus from that perspective, rather than from my organizing a run perspective. But I think this path achieves, will also help achieve that objective. To date, everybody that I've interfaced with has been very positive about it. The contributions have been excellent. More volunteers are stepping up with good suggestions, like if we need a fence, would a split rail fence be more attractive, say, than a black chain link fence? Would a round rail fence be more attractive? Would that make more sense if we had to supplement it with wire on the backside so somebody couldn't roll through the rails? Those types of things. So even though we're not at that point yet, these suggestions are beginning to come from the group, which I think was probably President Sells' intention of saying, have you spoken to these guys yet? So I'm reporting back, and it's positive. We also got a lot of recommendations about different types of vines, perhaps native sedges and grasses that could be grown on the riverbank, where we're currently in the process of removing the weed trees. Above and beyond the Call of Duty Award probably should go this week to Mike Collins, our village forester. I was begging him at the last minute because we don't want to cause any noise or cutting this weekend with the Olmsted Society's Fred Weekend. Mike came over, marked a half a dozen plants for saving, said, go ahead, we can begin to work on the others. So we've now cut some holes or windows where you can see from three pretty distinct points long river views. During the meeting with the engineer, we talked, and Ed was volunteering perhaps the tree service to remove the stumps, and we talked about a fence, and he also volunteered the village's material, and we volunteered the labor to run it the entire length. At the conclusion of the meeting, we were talking about turf. I've had further meetings with Tom Lupfer from Lupfer Landscaping. He's saying turf would be a logical extension, perhaps by the library, but maybe not spend the money in this long stretch behind the village hall. And he was saying if we've got wood chips, if we treat the, remove the stumps, treat the area, make it safe, and then put down wood chips, that'd be a great fall start to eliminate weeds for the spring. And if somebody wants to walk over wood chips, of course, that's a decent surface. I brought a little two-minute clip to show. We don't have a projector, so I won't take your time with it, but tomorrow I'll send you an email with a link to it, and you can go online and see it. And that's my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Sounds like things are moving in pace.
And I would like your permission to work with Peter and Ed and install that fence, continue to, after the Olmsted Society, to continue to cut on the lower bank. Mike's email to us, and I put a little video out there to identify the plants. There are a couple of beautiful willows that have been buried in the weeds by the side of the library. So we kind of open those up, save the willow, but remove some of the weeds, so you can begin to appreciate what's really there and has been hidden. So those things make sense. We are being sensitive to a couple of viburnums, a crab apple tree, but 99% of the rest is just weeds.
I think you really noticed it this week during the farmer's market in the back of the parking lot. You could see, you could see the work, you know, when people were walking back, you could look down and actually see the work.
And with regard to the fence question, though, the, since that's hardscape, that would be something that would have to be presented to LAC and Preservation.
Yeah, I think what Mr. Buttermer is referring to is a temporary fence that would be installed while the work is proceeding, and then he is, he is going to be working with the volunteers on obtaining a fence, and then once they've decided what fence material, then they will bring it back to LAC.
And one of, and one of the things I did at the plant commission was to ask them, I'm sorry, it was at the Preservation Commission, plan was canceled, but the intention was to ask them to prepare some input. Tell us what the code is, and we will need Bob Carrer to tell us what the code is before we can really plan a fence. I think I know what it is, but I'd like to confirm it with the experts before we get too far along. I think we haven't made mistakes yet, and I don't think we've, I think the community's reaction, those few that have seen it, has been positive, but what are you folks hearing?
I think it's progressing very nicely.
Very positive.
Okay.
Thank you very much for all your work, Jerry.
Oh, it's not me. Believe me, I'm the last guy to do the work. We got some great volunteers, and the staff has been terrific. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Buttermer. Anyone else? Next up is reports of village officers. The village president report. First up is a motion to appoint Margaret Rzesuski and Jack Buscio to the Economic Development Commission for terms to expire 2017 and 2016 respectively. So I'd ask for a motion and a second for these.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Foley.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pollak.
Discussion.
I can tell you that I know these folks. They bring a vast experience of both business and marketing expertise to the, to the commission, and the EDC is hitting on all cylinders, and they're going to be a very welcome addition to, to the EDC. So I'd ask for you to call the roll.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Valerie.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Foley.
Aye.
Motion carries. The only other thing I have tonight is just a little information about some signs that you're going to start seeing on First Avenue in Harlem. We do have two temporary signs that are now up on First Avenue that direct folks to our Riverside Downtown District, both going northbound and southbound on First Avenue. And we're working with our, our neighbors in the village of Berwyn to have signs on Harlem Avenue that will also be wayfinding, wayfinding signs that will direct folks to Historic Riverside, as well as to Berwyn. So we really appreciate the, the work that Berwyn is doing along with us. So this is, again, in further implementation of the CMAP plan to help folks find our downtown and visit our downtown. And that is all I have. Mr. Scolera?
I just have one item for the board and the public, and that is to provide you with an update on our property maintenance program. The program is well underway. We are in the process of making a sweep of the entire village, which we hope to complete by the end of the month. Staff is working with the village attorneys to bring code amendments back to the board to consider, which will bring the adjudication process in-house, along with stronger fines for work without permit or site maintenance. So it is an ongoing program, and we are working, and we thank everyone for their patience. If you've received one of those door hangers, we do ask that you please follow up and comply with the violations that have been noted, and failure to do so will result in a formal citation, which will then lead to a hearing at the moment at Maybrook. But we ask that you please comply with the hearing notices that you do receive. And that is all I have.
On that note, when you brought that up last time, I made a mention that, that the village should be held as accountable as we hold our residents. And I'd like to report that Mr. Bailey did a wonderful job with his, with his workers cleaning up the parking lot. I saw him the other day cleaning out the new parking lot, the old parking lots, the train station, weeding around it. The place really looks, really looks good. Patriots Park, I don't know if anybody's had an opportunity to drive by that, but some of the old plantings were taken out, and Ron has done a real nice job with some input from Bob Finn from LAC and, and all of the LAC members, and that's come a long way. So I appreciate the department heads coming, coming to task on those, on those issues also. So I appreciate it. Thank you. And also, I forgot. And we can't forget our volunteers. You know, the Olmsted Society did a great job along the river. I saw them last weekend. It's a, you know, I don't live too far from there, so it's really nice to drive down Riverside Drive and, and look out on the, out on the river, and obviously the work that Jerry's doing with Tom and, and his group, being able to see the river back here. I mean, we are, we are the village in a forest, and sometimes that forest tends to creep in on us. So I appreciate all the efforts. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Valerie. Next up is the approval of the consent agenda. Do you need the trustees to request anything to be removed from the consent agenda?
You know, I just have one question, and that is the, the last item, the CCI flooring.
Yeah, I do, too.
So you want to just remove that?
Okay, well, we will remove item I for a separate discussion, leaving items A through H. Anything else? I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve A through H.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Foley.
Second.
Second by Ms. Collins. Please call the roll.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Valerie.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Foley.
Aye.
A through H carries, and now we'll go back to item I. Mr. Valerie?
Well, my, my question is, is, and maybe I can understand the, the damage on the floor.
Before, just before, before you, since the folks at home might not, they don't know what, let me just tell you what this is. This is a motion to approve a change order in the amount of $1,797 to the contract with CCI Flooring for the refinishing of floors at Fire Station 1. That's the topic at hand.
And, and the, the upcharge are for two different things. One is, they had to go out and rent a, a electrical generator because the building's power supply wasn't adequate enough to, to run the grinding machines. And additionally, that the, some of the concrete floor had suffered major damage that needed to be repaired prior to the application of the floor sealant. Understanding that this company is, if this company is just a sealant company and, and didn't understand the floor being as damaged as it was, and had to bring in an outside contractor to fix that, I don't know if I have so much an objection with that, but I do have an objection with them coming in, looking at a job, and deciding when they're on the job that they don't have the proper electrical. It's not like you hide our panels. I would assume that that's part of the prerequisite of coming in and bidding the job to make sure that all, that the power's good and everything's good. And obviously, they, they came in, gave us a bid, and then at the last minute said the power's not good. I don't know why we should be held responsible for, for that error.
Well, let me say that that was originally in the contract about, that their equipment requires 480 volts for the heavy-duty machinery. So that was in the contract, and then provided by our interpretation that we would be able to supply that. But upon further looking at the panel, it was discovered that we did not have 480-volt supply here. In fact, we only had 220. So that, that was the, I guess the assumption was partly on our, our part of the fire department, assuming that we had that electrical supply available to us, and then not following up with, with the actual contract and, and the company, so.
Okay. Then I don't have a problem with it.
Mr. Foley, did you have something else?
I just wanted to know what the upcharge was for. I didn't know.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve item I.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Hamilton, second by Mr. Valerie. Please call the roll.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Valerie.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Foley.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is reports of departments and commissions. In this past week, all of the, all of our commissions have submitted written reports to the Board of Trustees in response to the requests by the board to, in terms of the implementation of the CMAP proposals. One of the main ideas of CMAP was to streamline and reform our commission structures, to make it simpler, more, more efficient, and more timely. And I have to say that after receiving the various reports of the commissions, it's, they've done an extraordinary job. They've, they've gone into depth with regard to their establishing ordinances, they've gone into depth with regard to their mission statements themselves, they've gone into depth in terms of the overlap that they have with other various commissions. We do have some of the commissioners here tonight. I don't know, we just received these reports. The next step is going to be for the board to actually digest reports, start to look at the ordinances, and as soon as we finish our, the work with the budget, we will begin the actual process of the redrafting. actual process of the redrafting and restructuring of the commission structure. So do any of the trustees have any questions with regard to any of the reports that we received at this point? Or should we wait until we're ready to? I need more time to work on that. Need more time. I do see Chairwoman Sizik here. Did you want to say anything in particular to the board?
No, I think that given to you and it's reported to every other trustee, overlaps lead historical committee has now been with the preservation.
So if you're going to continue, you need to come up here so people can hear you.
And I just wanted to add, it would be helpful to have Charlie Piple here as chair of the Preservation Commission to discuss this. Like I said, I feel there are some overlaps with preservation and historical, and we'd love to work with preservation. However, if the board feels there should be a separation on some aspects of our originating ordinances, we'd be happy to comply.
With regard to that, I notified all of the various chairpeople that they didn't need to come tonight since they had presented their written reports. The next step is exactly what you expect.
Okay, great.
The next thing is, both with regards, say, to you and preservation, LAC and preservation have some overlap. The next thing will be to start getting the chairs together to... Because this is the first time you've had a chance to see preservation support as well.
Exactly.
So the next step will be now the dialogue between the commissioners and the board of trustees.
Yeah, we would love that.
It's going to happen.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up are ordinances and...
President.
Yes.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments on that item.
Please.
On seven. Two things. One is I wanted to reiterate what you had said, President Suss, about the good job that they did. One thing that struck me perhaps the most was the lack of any kind of sense of turf. I mean, each of the committees were... Seemed more than willing to say, hey, this should be over there, you know, et cetera. It would work better if we didn't do this, or whatever. And I want all the committees to know that I appreciate that because I've seen other examples, not in Riverside necessarily, but other places where that does occur, and that's really something that we should hold up and recognize. The second thing I wanted to say is kind of off on a different tangent, but as long as we're looking at all these committees and commissions, the one aspect in here that I would like for us to look at, too, and for the committee chairs to look at, is staffing. Are they comfortable with the way they're being staffed? Do they need more? Do they need less? Would they like staff to take a different role? Or, you know, the good and the bad. What do you need in terms of staffing? I'd like to see that wrapped up in all of this as well.
That's a very good point, and I think what you'll... I think you're going to see that kind of from the other side as well when we get into the budget discussions. Our staff does spend a lot of time helping with the various commission structures. And one of the things I would like to see is if we can find a way to make the structure more efficient so that we don't have to expend as much staff time. And one of the... In fact, what you and Trustee Valerie have been working on with regard to the various procedure is a perfect example of that. I mean, that's going to alleviate a lot of time off of our building department to have a proper checklist and let folks know what they need coming into the various procedure so that our staff doesn't have to kind of oversee that. So I think that's an excellent point. And that is a really nice thing that you said, too, about the lack of the turf war aspect of it. I was delighted to see that.
Yeah.
Everybody's on the same page, it looks like. Anything else? Moving on, next is ordinances and resolutions. First up is a second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of the Village of Riverside zoning ordinance and village code relative to special and permitted uses in various zoning districts, regulation of bed and breakfast establishment, and rental kiosks. So this is a second reading. We already had... We don't have a motion and a second yet for this, right?
No.
So let's have a motion and a second first for the item.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Foley.
Second.
Second by Ms. Collins. Discussion. Mr. Pollak.
I have concerns about Section 4 of the ordinance, which is the section relating to bed and breakfasts, classification in residential districts. I have... At the last meeting, I expressed some of those concerns, and I was at the public hearing, and I did not recall any discussion about that. So after the last board meeting, I did contact several of the plan commissioners to ask them, you know, say, what did I miss? You know, I didn't recall that recommendation coming forward, and they all missed it, too. So I guess the bottom line here is they did not intend to or realize they were making a recommendation to reclassify bed and breakfasts in the residential districts, at least in the R1 districts, certainly. Their feeling was, well, we just talked about it for the downtown area. Downtown area being primarily the B2, but perhaps also the R2, R3, or R4, but certainly not the R1. So they did not intend to recommend that bed and breakfasts be permitted in the R1. I would like to see us approve this ordinance except for Section 4, deleting Section 4, and sending that part back to the Plan Commission so that we can have a proper recommendation before we proceed with that part of it.
President's question?
I don't have a problem with that. I think it's...
I don't have a problem with that. Are we also looking for language about these bed and breakfasts? How large they can be? You know?
I think that's in there.
That's in there.
There are several pages.
It's on Section 8, several pages.
I was comfortable with all of that. That was... In fact, I thought they did a terrific job with that.
Okay.
It's just that...
Yeah, I'd like to see the language of it, keeping it more in the central business district and out of R1.
I don't want to... I have my thoughts and opinions about what's right and what's wrong in terms of how we classify it, but at this point in time, all I'm suggesting is that we send it back to the Plan Commission, have them look at it, and have an intentional recommendation instead of kind of this accidental recommendation.
There was a confusion. I would agree with that.
Their response should be more considered than that, yes.
Let me ask the attorneys in terms of how to handle this. Can we just table that one section and approve the rest?
You wouldn't be tabling it... I mean, you would be taking it out of the second reading that's before you. The motion would be to approve all of it but that portion, and then there'd be a second motion to take the portion that was removed and remand it to the Plan Commission for further consideration regarding the zoning aspect of bed and breakfasts and what districts they should be in.
Let's do it.
And there wouldn't be any need for a further publication because you would track the notices.
Do we have to have a formal motion to send it back? Or can we just direct it to go back?
Well, it would be a motion... It would be a motion to direct. I mean, a formal motion, it wouldn't be like an ordinance or anything.
Right.
But you would act by motion.
And can we combine those two motions?
Sure.
So that's what you had in mind, right?
Yeah. So the motion would be to approve all but Section 4, and then to remand the language that is now in Section 4 to the Plan Commission for further discussion.
I'll second that.
Everybody's clear about that?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. There's a motion by Mr. Valerie, second by Ms. Hamilton. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Valerie.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Foley.
Aye.
Motion carries, and I would like, if possible, to get this on their next agenda item.
Do you need another motion to send it to the Plan Commission?
No, it was a combined motion to do both. It would be to the next Plan Commission.
Very efficient motion.
Yes, sir. Mr. Kerr.
Trustee Collins, is it just specific to the use? No other thing in the bed and breakfast, just the use?
Right.
In a residential...
Section 4, that ordinance is approved except for Section 4.
That's the only thing we're considering.
President Suss.
I'm very disappointed that this board would allow bed and breakfast in any residential districts. I'm sorry to say, but bed and breakfast, especially in this village, should be located only in the downtown area, commercial area. Thank you.
Well, the board... Mr. Kariel, the board didn't approve the bed and breakfast. What they're doing is they're sending it back to the Plan Commission to have them discuss it further and then send a recommendation back.
The recommendation by the board is to have it in the...
No.
No. You're not recommending it for R2, 3?
No, no. We just sent it.
Send it back to the Plan Commission. Okay.
Make sure you go to the next Plan Commission meeting.
What?
Make sure you go to the next Plan Commission meeting.
The last time I was at the Plan Commission, I was chewed out and yelled at, especially by Mr. Lesniak. They seem to get riled up when I get up and speak there. So I have not been at any Plan Commission meetings for the last four or five years. I haven't been at the board meetings here for the last three or four years. Tonight is the first time. My concern... Main concern tonight is that rezoning of the B1 zoning that made all those properties non-conforming. The overlay district that you people were talking about on Harlem and Long Common, the zoning doesn't allow for parking in front of buildings. Same thing with the Riverside Restaurant. That whole strip of Harlem Avenue has to be zoned properly so these building owners can expand and have some leeway of who they could put in there. Putting these restrictions on by the mindset of the Plan Commission is ridiculous. You can't have all these properties, especially on Harlem Avenue. The problem on Harlem Avenue, too, we got Costco going in, and the state might widen that street. They do own the streets, you know. We're to the middle of the street, but they own the street. The only problem is, if they do widen the street, we'd have to reconstruct our water lines. I mean...
Thank you, Mr. Kariel. Next up is my personal favorite. A second reading of an ordinance amending the village code of the Village of Riverside relative to approval of ordinances that won't require second readings. And I'm sure that Mr. Valerie would like to make this motion.
I would make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerie. Second.
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 Second by Mr. Pollak. Discussion. Mr. Valerie, why don't you just review quickly what this is about?
It's... It's... We generally discuss things, like, for example, tonight with the bed and breakfast. We discussed it at the last meeting, and that was our first reading. And then you brought it back this reading. And any time, and we had this discussion with Trustee Sussman, any time that a trustee has an issue with something, out of respect, we would obviously hold back before we pass something until we get all the facts. Or any time we have residents that have an issue or any kind of, you know, major sweeping change that we have coming through that you can generally sense that there's going to be residential discussion. This was an opportunity to allow that to happen, and it was a very good experiment that went on for four years. And really, what happened is it made the process 99.9% of the time longer. And it's our attempt to make the process more user-friendly for various different reasons, for the residents, for the businesses, and I think this is one step in the right direction.
And I would just add that we saw an example of how it can be done tonight with regard to that section regarding the bed and breakfast. There were concerns raised by a trustee, and we're sending it back. So the... I'm quite convinced that with this board that everything will always get a full and fair hearing with all the input that's necessary. Any other comment? Mr. Pollak?
One other thing that might be helpful for the village attorney, maybe can help us with this. There is a process where if we approve an ordinance, a trustee at the next meeting can make a motion to reconsider it if...
Well, yeah, I mean, Robert's rules provides for motions to reconsider. That's usually a situation, not where somebody doesn't have all the facts, but it's a situation where someone changes his or her mind. Because under Robert's rules, a motion to reconsider has to be made by someone who was going to change positions. The idea behind it is that it allows a reconsideration of an issue, but it doesn't... But it has a limitation so that it doesn't allow the minority to frustrate, just to make things longer for no good reason, just to bring it up again. So that's a procedure whereby, you know, for example, if you voted for something, and then there was an issue that you didn't realize, or there was a fact, somebody could bring that motion. I raise one caveat, though. It's a procedural vehicle. If vested rights attach when you take village action, for instance, a final approval of a contract that is then relied on, there are limitations to what can be undone. But where that's not the case, that's a vehicle to bring something back.
I just mentioned that as another fail-safe procedure that, you know, something...
And I believe a motion to reconsider, also, you have to have voted in the majority, correct?
Well, no. It can be, like, where a supermajority is required, you could be in the... You have to be switching... Yeah, I mean, you have to be switching positions. So, for instance, if there was a... Something could have gotten the majority vote, but it needed a supermajority vote, it didn't pass, and somebody in the minority wants to reconsider. So it failed, and they think, oh, you know, I thought the vote would come out differently. I thought it would be unanimous, and I wanted to make a political statement, but I didn't want to trash this, just as an example. They could ask that the motion, to ask that Peter put... Mr. Scolera put it on as a motion to reconsider, raise the issue, and then move to reconsider, meaning I'm casting my vote the other way. If that's seconded, then you take a revote, and if it gets enough votes to pass, it passes.
Okay.
So...
Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Valerie.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Foley.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up are considerations. And tonight, we have a discussion of the village-owned property located at 454 Northgate Court, the old pump house. And I... The board had asked trustees Hamilton and Foley to take a look at this building and give us some fresh ideas on how we might best manage that property with an eye looking forward. And they prepared a very nice, short memorandum for us, and I've asked them to present it to the board and to the community tonight, and then we're going to have a chat about it. So either Ms. Hamilton or Mr. Foley.
I'm going to take the lead, and then Trustee Foley is going to add his comments. So we went out a little over a month ago, maybe six weeks ago, to take a look at the property.
Can you get a little closer?
We went out... Is that better? We went out a little over a month ago, maybe six months, six weeks ago, to take a look at the property and evaluate it. It is a property that has had an industrial use. It is a substantial property. It has a lot of concrete, both in the structure and... Concrete and piping. I mean, this is not your average building. It's not even your average industrial building. It's not the type of building that would be easily converted if you wanted to make a reuse, a residential reuse. And the appraiser that the village had had look at it prior to this had, as we, as Trustee Foley and I agreed, believes that the highest and best use is a residential reuse, as it's surrounded by residential uses there. The prior appraisal that took... That was made evaluated the property as being worth $440,000. Now, I take a little bit of issue with that, whether it actually is worth that much, but I'm going to take that at its face value. But the manner of making an appraisal like that, when there is an existing structure But the manner of making an appraisal like that, when there is an existing structure on the property, is that the appraiser makes a guess, or asks someone, in this case, he asked the village, to make a guess, well, what would it cost to remove these encumbrances on the property? And then they subtract that from the value that they have appraised at to come up with what they think the for-sale value is. And in this case, the amount that they subtracted from that $440 was $70,000, to come up with a for-sale value, a market value, of $370,000. I think when Trustee Foley and I were out there, we both agreed that, we thought that the removal of the impediments, the encumbrances, would probably be worth more than that, which means marketing the property at $370,000, as it is being marketed right now, is excessive. And I think the fact, I think there are two things that we're observing. First of all, the property's been for sale for quite a long time and has little or no traffic. And secondly, the amount of encumbrance, this is not like buying a residential piece of property that has a frame house on it, knocking it down and building a new house. This is a substantial structure with a lot of concrete, a lot of piping, some of which could possibly earn a salvage value that would diminish the cost for us to take it down. But this is something that is really beyond the scope, even of smaller developers. And I say smaller developers because the property isn't that large that it would attract a large developer, but even smaller developers just don't want the hassle. So, in any case, we came to the conclusion that we believe it's, that the appropriate entity to remove that building and the associated piping and concrete is the village, that other than that, the property's just going to continue to sit where it is, be an attractive nuisance, stay off the tax rolls, and we're never going to be able to make any progress with it. So our recommendation is to, first of all, go out for bid and see what the cost would be to make that, make those improvements. That obviously would come back to the village for us to evaluate and vote yea or nay on. And then, assuming these are numbers that we can live with, put that in the 2014 budget so that we can take care of that. And then, once that's done, have the property reappraised at its value, and then place the property with an appropriate amount on the market for sale.
Mr. Foley?
I think the only other area that we would probably want to look into is the subdivision of that property, and that would be our, probably our only other cost. Of course, we could sell it as a single parcel, we could spend the money to have it divvied up into parcels for development, but since it is own multifamily, my feeling as a builder is it could be the home of four nice townhomes. You know, the current building in its state right now would never serve a purpose as a single-family home. It has no insulation. It quite frankly has very little or no heat, existing heat to it. It has no plumbing. It doesn't have the sewer facilities to handle a home setup, i.e. bathrooms. It's just not a building that would, in any way, shape, or form, be retrofitted into a single-family home. It serves no purpose as that. So, I'm in agreement with Trustee Hamilton that this building needs to come down. I think that we're in a much better position with the market coming back slowly to be in the position to have the only two vacant, or one of the only two vacant buildable lots in the town.
So, before we go further with our discussion, I got two more informational aspects of this. First, Peter, can you describe how the building is currently being used? And then, after that, Mr. Bailey, if you can give us kind of an overview of the current condition of the building?
Sure. What the building is being used primarily, it's being kind of shared right now, but it's being used more by our Parks and Recreation Department, in that the garage that we have in the back here is also at a state where staff no longer feels that it is a safe building. So we have removed a number, almost everything that's Parks and Rec-related, and moved it over to this Northgate property where we are currently storing it. We do have some old files that are still being stored there, and Public Works has some equipment that they also store there, but they are in the process of moving that to the new, to their facility on Columbus Drive. And then, Ed, if you want to maybe just share with the board the condition of the building itself?
I certainly agree that that is a substantial structure. That said, I think the greatest area of concern for me is the masonry. The ends of the building walls extend a little bit above the roof. There was vitreous clay caps on that, on the top of that wall. A number of those have fallen off over the years that allows water to get into that, the top of that wall, and you can see the evidence of the freestyle cycle where it's starting to deteriorate those bricks. And the longer it sits, the more that's going to deteriorate, and that certainly could become a safety hazard as those bricks fall off. I'm not so sure about the condition of the masonry down towards the bottom of the structure, but you can see that the mortar joints have largely deteriorated, and it could be that the bricks will start to loosen up also at the bottom. So, you know, from the standpoint of a building like that, you're always concerned about the building envelope, and that masonry issue, I think, is something that, if it's not dealt with soon, over time, it's going to be, you know, more and more of a problem. The only other issue that, from a building envelope perspective, is several years ago, actually in May of 2011, the second floor windows in the back were shot out, and I just had them boarded up, and they're still just boarded up. And we have a dilemma every once in a while where something will come up, and, you know, should we spend money on repairs or not, and so on? So, in that particular case, we boarded up the windows. Father Time has kind of ordained that those boards are now being covered up by vines and stuff like that, so they're not probably as visually objectionable. But, you know, just over time, that building, any building, sitting there is going to take money at some point. We had some work done on the fire alarm system a year or two ago, and it was, again, that dilemma, should we, should we not? And $500 here and $500 there. The only other thing that the expense we have is the heat is about, since, well, two years ago, you know, September 2011 to the present, we spent about $1,200 for gas. Electricity is not, is free, Common doesn't charge for electricity. But, like I say, the masonry issue, I think, is a significant thing to be concerned about if it's going to stay there much longer. And other than that, you know, we just have the usual maintenance on the mowing cycle. Property maintenance issues that we have to be concerned about.
One of the other issues, to Trustee Hamilton not agreeing with the $70,000, and I agree with her, is the cost of removing a lot of the pipe, the standpipe that is in the yard behind the building that was from the old tower. When they decommissioned the old tower and took it down, they didn't remove a lot of this large pipe, and we're talking pipe that's in the neighborhood of 30 to 40 inches in diameter and is buried in the ground. It was what carried the water from the pump building up into the tower. For a developer to come in and build on that site, that pipe has to be removed. Whether he does it, we do it, it's going to have to happen for a foundation to be put in. But I think the size of the lot, it can be cut into four nicely buildable lots, you know, and we can discuss the pricing, but it, what the numbers I've been crunching lately, it falls right in with what the going rate right now per square foot for raw land in Riverside is. So, if we hold that number that you and I were thinking.
So, further discussion? I have some questions, but do you have anything yet? Going back to what's in there now, where would we put the equipment first that's in there? Could we make room for that at the Public Works?
I think Ed is starting to get tight on space at Public Works because Fire has pieces of training equipment that they store there. As well as just the normal Public Works operations, the space is limited. So I think one of the things that the board will have to consider is really addressing the garage that Parks and Rec utilizes, or was utilizing for storage, and whether or not that needs to be addressed in the coming year.
In connection with this?
Yes.
We have those two bays right behind the police station that are, you know, those two, I think we have a couple of old fire trucks in there. I mean, there seems to be like a lot of room for two...
Well, we store the fire truck, hoses, ambulance, our backup ambulance is stored there, as well as just general work equipment that the Fire Department uses to make repairs to... So I think, even though it does look like there is room, there really isn't any room in there.
But there is also the drive.
Downstairs in the police garage, we use that for our overflow storage for files here at the village hall, as well as we utilize that space for the bikes that we collect. The police has a storage facility down there, and we park some of our intergovernmental agency vehicles down there as well.
There's, I've been down there, there's, could be, there should be enough room for, to carve out a little bit of recreation for a truck.
Well, not for, I don't think it's really the truck, because the truck, we could probably just park it on, in the lot itself. It's the nets, the balls, the chalk, the bags of chalk. You would really almost have to eliminate three or four parking stalls down there to put all of that stuff in there.
So, setting that part aside for a second, with regard to the files that are down there, my understanding is that these are very old files.
At Northgate?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, very, very old.
So, one thought that I had would be that we could ask the members of our Historical Commission first to do a review of those files to see if there's anything in there of historical significance?
I don't...
And if there isn't, why are we still keeping them?
Yeah, we should shred that.
Well, I think one of the things that, it's one of those projects that, and a lot of those files, I have to admit, are files from the village manager's office. It's just finding time to go there and really mark them, delineate them, so that we can then have some sort of shredding company come in and take them. So, this is, this project will kind of instigate us to complete that task, so...
Well, and that's kind of why I wanted to circle around back to the equipment question, because it seems to me if the board decides to move forward with this, it's going to necessitate us taking a broader look at our current storage facilities, how we're doing things, if we do need to, because that garage is about ready to fall down back there. In fact, I'm surprised it hasn't already. So that's something that would need to be addressed as well. One question I have, though, is with regard to the timing of this. I mean, you suggest in your memorandum that tonight, to get this in the budget for 2014. I mean, the budget for 2014, we're going to be talking about next month. So, I wonder if this is something, I mean, if the board wants to go this route, it may take us a year, you know, to the next budget cycle to get really ready for this. I mean, what are your thoughts about?
I don't think we're in any hurry, as far as the demolition can be performed at any time of the year. I would, to Trustee Hamilton's point, I firmly believe that there's a lot of money in there from a salvage standpoint, and that money can be used to offset the demolition, and some remediation work that needs to be done to that building before it's demolished.
How would you suggest a handle on budgetary?
I guess what we could, what the board could do is, we could add a line in the budget for next year. Based on the memo, it says 120, but I would probably, just to be safe, put 150 in the budget. And that, therefore, there is a placeholder in the budget. If the board decides to move forward and demolish it, then it's already a line item, and if it comes in under budget, then it comes in under budget. Where the other route would be to not put it in the budget, we could do the, go out for the bids next year after we identify what we're going to do with the other facilities, and then the board would then, at the end of the next, at the end of the next fiscal year, have the opportunity to make a budget amendment for any money spent for the demolition of the property.
Is there one way or the other that's easier on staff in terms of the budgetary process?
I personally don't like budget amendments, so I would prefer that we put in a line item in the budget, and then if we come in under budget, great, and hopefully the pipe that's down there will offset a big chunk of that money that you put aside in the budget.
So I see shaking heads. I take it everyone's in agreement with that?
And my idea on moving forward on this is just that, I think of it as an attractive nuisance, and as Mr. Bailey pointed out, it's just continuing to deteriorate, you know, and you never know when kids might be climbing around there and get hit on the head with a falling piece of concrete, or, you know. My idea is just it's an attractive nuisance sitting there, and if we're going to do something on it, let's move ahead.
And as construction, as the economy turns, construction costs will go up. So what we don't do this year is going to cost us 10% more next year. And that 10% may not be offset in the cost, in the value of the land, so I think the sooner you can get this stuff done, the better.
So I know that right now that the staff is deeply involved in producing the budget for us to consider. So I assume after that's done would be an opportunity for you to prepare. So the recommendation, I take it, is to authorize bidding out for remediation cleanup at the site with an eye toward eventual destruction and hopefully getting some recoup of the salvage value of the metals. Is that the consensus I see of the board?
Yeah.
I'd like to see what bids come in at. I think that's all that we're looking at right now, is to put this off the bid.
We're just getting information.
Right.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Perfect.
And then we're going to look into what to do with the village manager's files.
It might be his new office for a while.
Every week we'll just bring over a different, you know...
One drawer a week. That's it, don't start the whole thing, one drawer a week.
All right, so that's all under considerations. Any new business?
It is my fault, Kathy's been telling me, when are we going to go over there?
Hearing new business, we do have a need for an executive session tonight for the discussion of appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, and also the discussion of possible lease of village-owned property. So we will adjourn to executive session, no final action will be taken, we shall not reconvene. So I'd ask for a motion to adjourn the executive session.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion, Mr. Foley?
Second.
Second, Ms. Collins, please call the roll.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerain.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Foley.
Aye.